All the meetings ordered six thirty, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call. Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Peterson.
Present.
Present. Alright, um, first item on the agenda is the approval of the tw- April twenty twenty. April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes as presented. Do we have a motion in the second?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson, action. Second trustee Bluthard, uh, roll call please.
Bluthard.
Yes.
If you?
Yes.
Here's.
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes motion carries. Alright, uh, mayoral reports. Okay, thank you for everybody coming out tonight. We have a whole house here. And, um, it'll be a shorter meeting since tonight is a, or the ceremonial meeting when we swear in our new board and our new trustee this evening. Um, we do have some visitors here and I will say this will be the last swearing in to this building, so, um, enjoy it, enjoy the, the heat while you're in here. Um, we have the Viking Junior Varsity Football Team. Are you guys here somewhere? Families, fires, alright. Alright, so the two, um, what age group is the junior varsity team? So I'm gonna just shout it out.
Six, seventh and eighth grade.
Six, seven, eighth grade. Alright, so this is the junior varsity Super Bowl team for the fall of last year. Um, they went into the playoffs as a, an underdog and pulled off the win. Other coach Dan Bender, is Dan here?
Yeah.
Dan? Alright, yes. We would like to quote your players. Be sure you come up here, introduce your players and your coaches and tell us a little bit about the team.
Alright, sounds good. You sure of the mic? Do I need the mic?
Yeah.
Yeah, you.
All those people on C one.
Alright, sounds good. Okay. Alright, well, this is my first speech that I ever wrote on a phone and I wish I would have sent it on Blake's phone 'cause this is an iPhone eight and it's really small, so I'm having a hard time seeing it. Anyway, uh, good evening, members of the village board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak tonight. My name is Dan Bender and I would like to introduce our team of moms. Melissa McMillan, Melissa Waters, and Katrina Sekalowski. Eight months. About the team mom, I mean, they make the things run smooth and organized, so we appreciate it. Um, let's see, uh, our head, our coaches, Coach Neil Backer in the back. Coach David Sanchez. And Coach Jordan Birchfield, I don't believe I see him, but he was an integral part of our team. We had the privilege of coaching the Antioch Viking JV Big Ten Football Team, this year's Super Bowl Champions. Oh, story.
One minute.
That ain't happening. Alright, what makes this championship truly special is that it wasn't a story of domination from start to finish. It was a truly an underdog story, one built on grit, growth, and unity. We finished the regular season with a five and three record, competitive, but we knew we had more in us. We entered the playoffs as a fifth seed. And, on the top brackets are in every step of the way, three straight road games in the playoffs. Grayslake Central, Prospect High School, and Wakanda for the Super Bowl. These sixteen players here came together like I've never seen before. During the playoff run, our point differential was sixty-six to twelve. That is not just a stat, that's a reflection of how locked in, disciplined, and motivated this team was. They faced adversity, stayed composed, and rose to the moment. What I'm most proud though is not just how they accomplished this on the scoreboard, but how they did it. We embodied the roots principle, respect for the rules, respect for officials, respect for opponents, respect for teammates, and respect for self. This team lived up to those values. They respected the game. They showed sportsmanship in every matchup, and they supported one another like a true brotherhood. This championship run is a testament to their character and is to the kind young men that they're becoming. Leaders, teammates, and representatives of our community. To the, uh, families, the organization, and to the village, thank you. Your support gives these kids a chance to grow throughout this game and we don't take that for granted. We're proud to bring this title home, but more importantly, we're proud of the way they earned it. So I present to you your twenty twenty-four Antioch Vikings JV Big Ten Super Bowl Championship Team. Thank you. Individual, uh, yeah, you could call it recognitions. I know I'm also known only by last name, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Parker Jarrett, why don't you stand up? Alright. Anderson. Jason Palucci. Eli Waters. Adam Sanchez. Pam Rubin. Eli Lopez. Wyatt Ludwig. Daniel Ramsey. Hayden Silva. I'll say it right this time, Caleb Kaldani. Last, Blake Bender. Stand up, out of the blocks, come up here, come, come up here, all the way up here.
Coaches, get in here, Timmy, get in here. Congratulations, guys. Everybody here go to, um, how many of you are eighth graders? How many are going to Antioch High? What, Lakes High School? One, one of the Lakes? No, okay. I don't wanna say anything about beating Lakes High School, because people on the team, alright, so.
Didn't take Wakanda, that was a reason.
Alright, alright, well, good job, guys. Congratulations. Thank you for coming in.
You guys are too tall, we can't see anybody.
Yeah, we all gotta see. I think I have big hair. Alright. Congratulations, guys. Good night.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Being a CHA quick, except for on autographs.
Well, thank you. Alright, while they're, um, filling out the room, so we are going to, in a moment, we're gonna adjourn and then we'll do the swearing in of the, uh, of the officers. And do the oaths, and then at the end, obviously, there'll be time for pictures of the family of, uh, the elected officials that want to take. So, I'll let them clear out the room, but, um, in a moment, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn and die. Motion trustee Bluthard, second trustee Peterson, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Alright, meetings adjourned at six thirty-eight. Alright. Just so you guys know, that was a little unexpected, so. Alright, um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order in a second. Uh, again, uh, this is gonna be for the, uh, installation of the officers and we'll go through a short business meeting, so I asked for, um, I'm, I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty-nine. So we're gonna go through the officers. I wanna, um, again, in a moment, we're gonna go through myself, the trustee Pierce, trustee Bluthard, and our new trustee Jose Martinez, who, again, I wanna, um, in advance, welcome him to the board. And, uh, he's gonna up the dressing game for all of us on this board. He's nice dressed very, very well. And, um, again, I wanna congratulate him on, on becoming the newest member of the, of the board for the next four years, so. I'll turn this over to a man in clerk who needs to handle all the, um, swearing in and our, we have three distinguished judges here. Uh, one is Judge Matt D. Martini, we have one, uh, Judge Ortiz, and Judge Daru are gonna be swearing in the, uh, different officials that are being sworn in tonight, so. Right, yeah.
I state, I Scott Gardner, of the elected mayor of the village of Antioch, of an elected, I live in the county of Lake, the county of Lake. I solemnly swear or affirm, solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. But I faithfully discharge the duties of mayor to the county of Illinois. I faithfully discharge the duties of county of Illinois.
No starter.
But it's more deeds and they'll swear in trustee Pierce.
Not a very auspicious start.
Take your name, I. I Scott Pierce, who has been elected as trustee of the village of Antioch, Illinois. I'm elected trustee of the county of Antioch, Illinois, the county of Lake, the county of Lake. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee, the duties of village trustee. The best of my ability, the best of my ability, so I'll be, for helping them. Congratulations, thank you.
The room will swear into the Bluthard.
I state, I Bluthard, who has been elected as trustee, village mayor, the county of Lake, the county of Lake. The county of Lake, I solemnly swear or affirm, solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge, I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee, the duties of village trustee. That's my ability, the best of my ability.
Hi, Jose Martinez. Having been elected. As a trustee of the village of Antioch.
County of Lake.
And the county of Lake.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of village trustee.
Of village trustee.
That's my ability.
That's my ability.
Now onto the regular business, um, so, according to your new seat, you have a lot of knowledge that you're sitting between. Alright, um, roll call please. Here. Here.
Here. Jose Martinez.
Here.
Mr. Pierce. Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Present. Um, do you have any citizens that signed up to address the board, the trustee Anderson? Okay. Alright, so the next thing is the mayoral reports. Cut up quite a few acknowledgements for this month, uh, mental health, mental health awareness month, motorcycle awareness.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, uh, thanks.
A signage sheet? Yeah, sure, I'll go through this and then I'll come back to the citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. Um, motorcycle awareness month, foster parent appreciation month, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. They have Jewish Heritage Month, Police Week, which I believe is this week, uh, National Public Works Week, Municipal Clerks Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, which is going on right now, Small Business Week, National Safe Boating Week. Um, happy belated Mother's Day and Mother's Day for all the mothers in the room, and International Nurses Day. Um, I wanted to make a brief announcement before I go to the citizens portion. Um, we will be having everybody in this room. Um, and your families are invited to a little reception at Mexican Paradise, um, after this, so, um, I have the room from seven to nine, and I think the open bar starts at seven, so if you walk out during the meeting, I'm okay with that. We, um, alright, citizen wishing to address the board, um, ma'am, you wanna come up and just, we're gonna, um, the basic rules are, it's a three-minute, uh, timer, so just come up here, uh, state your name and, um, you know, we have to give your address, but where you live, floor is yours.
Thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is Kathleen Shea, S A T A. I live, uh, in Newport Township, which is, uh, ordered by one seventy-three, forty, forty-five, um, North Avenue. South is, I think, the only property, Crawford, the only Crawford? Okay, I live in the heart of it. Okay, I live on Crawford Room. So I'm a little bit late to the gate on this. I've been out of town. And basically, I'd like to thank village board for, particularly Mr. Mason, for speaking up about Carmax, okay? Uh, as you all know, we have a deficit in police, fire, MNT, and people who wanna be on patrol in areas that are rather, uh, not covered very well by police, fire, et cetera. So we have a traffic problem out in Newport Township and Antioch Township. And I'm sure the township survives, um, township road commissioners are talking to each other about it. But we have quite a crisis on Crawford and Edwards Road. We have semi vans going through there at night, avoiding the six thousand ton sign limit. God, who's surprised about that, right? So they're coming off I ninety-four, down Edwards Road, uh, up Crawford. They're probably avoiding a wait stop, something along the line, the wait limits, et cetera. I don't, I don't know, it's not my, it's not my lane, if you hear me. Uh, I'm a clinical psychologist, okay? Bottom line, we're concerned about traffic with tractor trailers, um, people farming. People, there's kids out there that play on the streets, like rural areas like Antioch used to be. Um, my father and uncle would put the outhouses in the middle of Main Street for Halloween. That's how far back I go in Antioch, okay? So bottom line, I don't have any impact studies on what's been done with accepting anything with car, Carmax, okay? I don't know anything about what you've approved. I'm only, uh, accessing the April ninth minutes and I'm very concerned and wanna thank people who are, who are doubting the amount of money it's gonna cost to keep, uh, Antioch from, from receiving a benefit from Carmax. Particularly Mr. Mason, okay? Cause he identified the amount is too little. We need help in Newport Township with our roads and with people, or with, uh, with, with these tractor trailers, or they call them. Car port, ten car tractor trailers.
You keep going.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what impact they have, I've just seen them on the highway. And our roads are not well. I mean, one of our pockets take one out, okay? So that's how desperate a concern this is. And I don't know if there's an impact study of Carmax around the area. Is there one? Is it, is, anybody's thoughts to have an impact study about the other townships? Okay, um, if, if there is a thought about that, I applaud you. If there's anything I can do to help, I, I will. Um, I have this folder of sixty-five signatures on a neighborhood watch. And I don't want them all to walk in the door. Okay, I'm here. We have a pretty nice agricultural community, we'd like to keep it that way. But we don't want tractor trailers pulling ten cars, et cetera, in and out on Crawford or Edwards, or any of those roads. And I don't know of any police department, like county sheriff, who's equipped to help us, and I want you to think about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if you wanna leave anything with, uh, clerk, um, you can leave with us, she'll put in the record if there's a petition or something, so.
Next time you see me, I'll have all that.
Okay, perfect. Alright, thank you. Alright, um, we have three, two items on the consent agenda. Do I have any request from the trustees to remove either of those items? I, I ask a motion and a promotion in a second. I'll move, motion trustee Bluthard.
Okay.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Uh.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. On to the regular business. First item is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of one million, five hundred eighty thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and ten cents. We'll have a motion in a second. Motion trustee Pierce.
Okay.
Second trustee McNeil, any discussion on this?
After we just said the.
Yes, trustee Mason?
Well, this is Steve Agon, per se. Yeah, I paid eleven, there's a payment for, uh, I R R F for ninety-six thousand, one or ninety-six dollars and thirty cents. Uh, to former administrator Jim Kind. I don't know his contract, what he got paid, I was relieved. But I, I would like that item removed, off the bills, and we all see what he, what, what he got paid, his final payout. This seems excessive, and I know it's done prior to me, kind of the board, moved the parachute, as it was called. But I think that item should be pulled, and we should look at, we, we should, the whole board should know his, his, uh, agreement when he left.
Um, so there's some discussion about one, um, specific item, and it's a little bit unique, so I would ask the, uh, finance or the village administrator, uh, or village attorney, is there any precedent from approving a, uh, approving a accounts payable and holding one of those items for further explanation?
It does happen. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'll defer to the administrator and then, if it's necessary. But what I've seen before is you prove all but that one objectionable item, and then you come back and you discuss the objectionable item. Uh, and I'm not, we got a connotation by saying objectionable, one that trustee raised, um, or if, you know, I don't, was a motion made?
Not a motion.
I can make.
Although we, a motion was made to approve in second, but we'd have to amend it.
We amend the motion. We amend the motion, approving all bills save or accepting the one that was mentioned by, um, trustee Mason, and then you discuss the one discussed or brought up by trustee Mason. That happens often. Not often, but it happens.
We put it on the regular business tonight, or regular business night?
Um, put it on the regular business tonight.
Alright, um, so I would need a motion, um, Mr. Gachow.
Yeah, I can check her. Just clarify one point respectfully there. Um, the payment itself was not made directly to former minister, and this was a payment being made to I R R F. Uh, which is accelerated payment due to the final, the final salary calculation is done for this pension. So it's not, it may directly to, it was invoiced received by I R.
Is this a one-time payment or a multiple payments?
Could be one-time.
One-time payments?
That's why I want it pulled. I don't think we know enough as trustees. I get a I R R F, but we should know exactly what the final payout, payout is to the checkbook.
So can I, um, is staff okay if I entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable, holding that one item for further discussion, or is that gonna cause any type of, um?
You can hold on it in a minute, so it's fine.
What's that?
You.
The mayor minister. By I R R F, the district.
Sorry to say it wrong.
He's saying it's, as long as it's voted on, it's reflected in the Minnesota, it was pulled, he can provide that to I R.
Okay, and if we do it to.
I'm saying if attorney said that, you're gonna vote everything but that one item, and you're immediately going to discuss that one item and vote it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we necessarily can, I'm sorry. Um, I think trustee Mason could ask for supporting document, they've been, we've divided the board, and I don't think we can add this for documentation in a minute. But I don't see how we can vote on it, and I know, we can't.
It's so hard.
I mean, can we vote on it in two weeks? That's still okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the, what his final payout was though, is completely separate of this issue. This is a, I R R F. I R R F wants that back down and what you owe I R R F. What you paid him out is an informational item that really has no back down on this payment. If you turn around and say, you paid him out a million dollars, it will not stop you, what you owe I R R F.
Okay, understood. Alright, so, um, how would the board like to proceed on this? So I have a motion in a second to approve the accounts payable. I have a, um, a trustee that has, um, uh, may have a concern, but we don't have a motion in that regard yet, so Ed, do you wanna make a motion on?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion, cause I think anybody leaving, and if you wanna call the folded parachute, the folded ticket that he had prior to, you get to be mayor. Whatever he had, I think the rest of the board should know exactly what he got paid to leave and think the public right now in tax time, especially with the tax bills that came out. Everybody's tax bill, well, we should know exactly what one individual got, early retirement, that whole package program.
So, so yeah, so give me this, so give me the, the motion in, you know.
I would like to, okay, the motion would be, we can prove all bills except for leaving the, the I R R F payment off the ninety-six thousand, one or ninety-six dollars and thirty cents to be discussed at a later meeting.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second, and as long as this is paid certain for the next meeting.
What? You want to make sure it's at the next meeting? Next meeting, yeah, okay.
May twenty, I said, may twenty-eighth meeting, okay. So I have a motion to approve the accounts payable, um, minus the I R R F payment uh, with a, um, uh, discussion to take place on May twenty, twenty-eight. Yeah, so you get.
Yeah, so that would be, trustee Mason, trustee Pierce, correct me if I'm wrong, but the initial motion would be a motion to amend the original motion such that the vote would be for all accounts payable save or accepting the ninety-six thousand dollars change discussed by trustee Mason.
Exactly, by trustee.
Is that correct? Yeah, so we discuss it next, correct, and then we'll be on next meeting.
Oh, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna call the vote for, for moving that.
Right, to, yes, to have trustee accounts payable, the everything but that.
Okay, so, uh, my motion is second, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Bluthard?
No.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one voting no, motion carries.
Now we have the substantive motion to vote on the approving all payments, um, in the amended amount, which is plus the I R R F thing.
I'd like to recall it.
No, do a call.
Roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Item number four is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing and approving memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Community High School District one seventeen and the vid, and the village of Antioch to share information, and the school resource officer. This is ordinance number twenty-five, dash five, dash fourteen. Do I have a motion in the second, waving the second reading?
Waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthard, any questions for the, uh, chief on this?
Yeah, very, very simply, trustee, this is a two-year renewal of our current SRO agreement, uh, in terms, with the high school to continue the SRO. Additional picking up the portion, right, that has checked, correct there, fifty, paying ninety-five thousand dollars per year.
Any other questions on that? Alright, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes motion, motion carries. Number five is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing and approving intergovernmental co-op agreement with the Board of Education of Antioch, Consolidated District thirty-four and the village of Antioch for fingerprinting services. This is ordinance number twenty-five, dash five, dash fifteen. We have a motion in the second, waving the second reading. So I'll move.
So we're waving the second reading.
Motion trustee McNeil, second, second trustee Bluthard, any questions on this item? Alright, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Consideration, number six is consideration and approval of an amended appropriation ordinance for the village of Antioch, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May one. Consideration, number six is consideration and approval of an amended appropriation ordinance of the Village of Antioch, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May one, twenty twenty-four, pending April thirty, twenty twenty-five, ordinance number twenty-five dash five dash sixteen. We have a motion in the second waving the second reading.
So I'm waving second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee McNeil. Any discussion on this? Roll call please.
We have a brief explanation, especially since it says.
This is Michael Peterson, the finance director.
Thanks, Ken. So the original annual appropriation was passed July twenty-fourth, July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four. And that was setting the legal spending limits, which is generally has a cushion on top of the budget, the operating capital budget. And it has a pretty good cushion to it. But through the year, there were items that were within departments that were not budgeted for. And this kind of sets things right for the legal spending authority, even though you see some significant numbers going down. That doesn't mean it's the one thing, zero budget that you see now have a dollar amount in the difference. Those are the items that we're solving for and they're not, it's not overwhelming, but anything still within kind of the budget numbers. It wasn't like you really went wild there to that. It's all fine, but it's necessary to get this correct. And again, I think this is the first time in, I think, five, ten years or something. I have my eyes on it, so.
Any other questions on that? All right, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Bluebird?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, six voting yes motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving an employment agreement for the chief of police of the Village of Antioch, Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight. We have a motion in a second. Motion trustee Mason, second, second trustee Bluthard, any discussion on this item? Right, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
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 Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, yes motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving an employment agreement for the village administrator of the Village of Antioch, Illinois, Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion trustee Mason, second trustee Peterson, any discussion on this item? All right, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Um, next one is administrators report.
Thank you, honours. A couple of quick items for this evening. Uh, staff continues to do some final finishes on the budgeting process. Uh, the board should receive the draft copies next week to begin your review of the overall operating and capital budget. We are planning the budget presentation in our request for approval at the May twenty-eighth meeting. If you have any questions, let's you receive that document next week. Please reach out to myself or Director Peterson and we'll actively clarify and walk you through any collective figures. Work continues at village hall. We didn't provide any pictures for the night. There were nothing to see on photo. Looks very same, even though there's a lot of work taking place in time. The mold remediation project was successful. The drive was then reinstalled and we don't anticipate any further problems with that. Our internal working groups have been working on things such as furniture selection. The mayor is currently working with our interior designer on the project setup of the corporate layout. So we'll have some, we'll have some cost estimates in the future for that. We've opened our new permits for mayor, Donna Del Plazio, who started with us this week. So if you have an opportunity, please stop by and introduce yourself to her. To fill our recent void in our communications position within the village, we have partnered with Vicarious Communications as a contractor. Help us manage and facilitate our external communications. It will assist us in keeping up with our external facing communications for the community while helping us prepare for our future onboarding of a our next communication specialist. Uh, we're having some conversations internally and on with the mayor that if this partnership is deemed to be effective because of the cost savings that it has the potential to bring us. Uh, staff may come forward to the board with, discuss a longer term partnership with the contractor, maintain our communications workflows. Planning within staff continues on the kickoff concert. Everything is on track for us to host another fantastic community event this year. I had briefly talked briefly about our tornado sirens, some of the changes that are going to have to be implemented in our system as a result of the move to Laycom. Currently, Sencom, our dispatch center manually activates those sirens. Uh, Laycom is a much larger responsibility. It's going to be dispatching for nearly every community across the county. Simply doesn't have the capacity to man those sirens. So that forced us to go look for another alternative. So we've been working very, very closely with the Antioch First Fire Protection District and then collaborating with the township. Uh, and I'm proud to say that we've been able to identify what it will be, an improved system over what we currently have. We've identified that the federal signal command one solution is going to be both cost-effective and increase our warming activations for the timeframes most we're able to warm our communities. Rather than relying on the human factor for the activations we currently do. Command one systems that integrate directly with the National Weather Service. It's going to be able to activate our sirens based on real-time data being applied by them. Every time a polygon is indicated on radar, the system will detect that based on path, vector, speeds, all these types of things. To determine when the appropriate correct time to activate our sirens are. So it'll give us more accurate warnings so we're not falsely setting up panic within the community for a storm that may not even come near our community. But by tracking it, it's going to make sure that they're activated in a timely manner. One of the challenges we have moving to this system is we currently have a partnership with the township. The Sencom activates ours, but there's back-end technology that allows the township to activate theirs through their fire. With that going away, we wanted to make sure that when our sirens go off, the entire community sirens go off. So we don't have theirs going off at one time, others going off at another. So we're going to be able to integrate this system. The township has agreed to a very modest capital outlay on some hardware that's going to allow them to integrate into our system itself. So when one siren goes off, it'll go off throughout Antioch Township. So this solution will achieve and a little bit more streamlined effect, community-wide. Fortunately, it also comes at a relatively modest cost. So for year one, our investment is going to be approximately four thousand dollars. Including some paging features that'll allow these weather alerts to go out to all of our first responders in advance. Also notify us in real-time if there's problems on the air sirens. And then through conversations I had with supervisor Shawna C, in years moving forward, we'll be bringing an intergovernmental agreement between township and village. So this is also, we each had a plus, plus two thousand dollars annually for this much improved and recognition activation system. Earlier today, we had some good news. I know there's been a lot of conversations and questions surrounding the latte cafe will open at Seaplane Park. So we've been informed that our vendor plans to have soft opening this weekend. So everything is in place other than the liquor license. Their sanitation inspection is taking place tomorrow, so they plan to be open tomorrow. So other than liquor service, they'll start providing service and they're anticipating their full scheduled opening with their liquor license service to be around June fourteen. Just like to take an opportunity to thank everybody that's been working on this internally. Katie from Parks, Kim, our business liaison specialist, and then a special shout out to Dennis, all that works, Bob Retner, our facilities maintenance staff, and then Jim Hill, who did all the lications. So everybody kind of came together under the guise of teamwork and got this thing accomplished. There's a lot to be done. And then lastly, kind of on the subject of the park, I'm sure you've seen that the activity has picked up. Park and it's full of smiling faces, people enjoying it. Also, in keeping with our practice last year, we're on the PD side of things. I have having fun of our park security controls by our CSOs. So we will have many service officers in the park on the evenings, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, similar to last year. Make sure that the rules are enforced, people are educated, and that everybody can have a safe and enjoyable time with it. It's fantastic community, community. With that, Bill, we'll report this. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Does that have the capability to text citizens?
No, it's an internal paging tool. It does go forward-facing. As a reminder, first, community members that are interested in having weather alerts, still do have the higher reach platform, which is partnership between us and our district, which they can sign up to receive those probably.
Thank you. Village clerk?
Great thing of day that the group is scheduled for the opening. And as a matter of record, we did receive the abstract of votes certified from Lake County for the April first election, received on the twenty-first.
Thank you. Hey trustee reports.
I got one I'd like to go. In the next meeting, I would like to go over the program we spent, what it's doing to shield fencing. We spent twenty-two thousand dollars, but I don't think nothing. And I would also like to discuss further the gas stations, both, all three of them have reached out for liquor license. We're going to get a new, uh, gas tax coming July eighteenth, so it's going to be a total of eighty-five cents a gallon in Illinois. So the competition to go across the line is fierce. So we got to help our gas station, if that wills. If we don't, we're going to lose them. We'll have empty buildings. Eighty-five cents, they'll make a burden, make it over line, and that's going to be sixty, seventy cents cheaper a gallon.
I think, um, but that, one of the county meetings coming up, and then I think the other laser thing is part of the budget, so you can look at that in the budget presentation.
Yeah, I just want to know what the geofence is. I don't think anything's even been done with that.
Wait, and, um, maybe Kim Biederman should be here in the budget.
Yeah, she's been running several parts.
Okay, sure, okay. Department reports, community developments.
Robert Parry.
Those that don't know him.
Hello, Robert Parry, uh, community development. So this is just a brief update. I'm still working through the ICC building code twenty twenty-four state. Especially amending the doctor code nine dash one dash two, which is titled nine building regs. This is the building codes that complements the new codes that are probably going to be adopted for June. It's going to be in June, as we move forward to the county regular meeting. The second one is working for the business license ordinance. The legal team here has received my copy of the revised ordinance, the new application, the new handout that I created. So that's been reviewed by legal. This is in comparison to chapter one, the general licensing. This is an update to that. The third item is, you know, now it's spring, moving close into summer future. Enforcing on property maintenance, especially the anti-op shopping center, you're starting to see some progress happening, uh, which is good news for all of us. Then the final one is, you know, we just hired a new permits coordinator named Sandra Del Maloza. And I'm working with her to get her up to speed, building matters, but she's quite qualified in this position. She's already starting to present, you know, different things that we should improve upon.
Thank you. Any questions? I just add one item. Assistant Administrator Moran, we did talk, we did order an official appraisal for this building. So we should have that back too, because we have some developments, interest in it already, so we're just trying to get those numbers. All right, thank you, Robert. Finance, Michael, do you have anything else?
Said the budget's coming along very fast steps. So I'm just wrapping up, uh, budget sheets. I'm going to have to do it, be prepared, be preparing for the budget presentation and then the actual budget book. Those two things are on a plate. And we already started into the audit, investigators have a list of over a hundred items of requests. Request for information over the past. And so we're busy kind of get them everything they're needing and then June the twelfth for the preliminary audit. We'll be back again in August. Busy, busy.
Thank you.
Michael? You still have my two placeholders in there? Your other discussions?
So I have them, I have them on my version, but everything and then you think that the board is requesting, have it run through the board. I don't, I can't set anything, do I write? I don't, it's kind of direction I have, I have it so that I know about it. But it's really, items are going to come in front of the board. You're going to request initially is the process.
Sure.
Um, so.
And, and, um, when we pass out those booklets or whatever in advance, people, we'll get those meetings again, kind of how you did for the preliminary budget stuff to go through the. Thank you. Uh, police. Vander Smith?
Jim, could you start my phone? Shouldn't we take about twenty-five minutes? Uh, just want to put out a reminder that our annual shop on the cop is this Friday. I put some merchandise myself, if you guys, or I'm sorry, cop model. Is this Friday, I put merchandise out here so you guys can take a look before you have to walk out. Uh, the coffee cups are ten bucks, the ball caps fifteen, and the t-shirts are twenty. Uh, this past weekend, Officer Shoals attended the region B Special Olympics Spring Games. He had the privilege of handing out the medals to the winners. On that, Officer Shoals also is a position of a member as a Special Olympics Region B coordinator. Uh, Charlie, since he started with the department, has put his heart and soul into Special Olympics, so we just want to take the time to thank him. And we'd also like to thank and congratulate all the participants who did the region B Spring Games this weekend. A great job. Uh, at the end of the school year, our SRO are going to be redeployed into our patrol division. They're going to still continue to engage the unit at the parks. Uh, they're going to have day shift and active shift to complement their staffing levels. Uh, we recently hired two more new recruits, which will bring our staffing up, also fully staffed. Almost the last ten years that we've ever been fully staffed. But we won't see them release the solo patrol till about December of this year, January twenty-sixth. So they start the academy on Mondays. Just to piggyback on Howard's, the thing with the code enforcement, code enforcement officer over the last ninety days, I just want to give you a quick update on him. He's issued over fifty-six warnings, thirty-two red citations and over a hundred verbal warnings. So we're eager with, uh, Phil, the enforcement officer of U G, he responds to within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, which is aggressive. Say, uh, congratulations to him and to all of the, I'm sure you guys can see it on time. That concludes our report. Does he have any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, so that will conclude our meeting for, before we adjourn. But again, I welcome anybody here, your families, friends to come to Mexican paradise after this. On that note, I entertain a motion after the motorcycle, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion trustee Martinez, I gotta get used to saying that. Second trustee Bluthard, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned at seven eighteen.